We're beginning the pre-meeting for the Board of Selectmen. And my understanding is that we have a special guest tonight who wants to address the Board and public safety personnel. Is that right?
Yes.
All right. You want to ...
My name is Thomas Bradley, and I would like to the Berlin Select Board. I know the Berlin Police and EMTs save lives every day, but last Sunday was a bit different as it was my life they saved. The words "thank you" do no justice for the action made by the Berlin Police, EMTs, firefighters, to me and my family. They went above and beyond the call of duty, which makes it possible for me to stand here in front of you today. You should be proud of all of them as everything went the right way and how they hold a special place in my heart and my family's. And the following people should be recognized and their superiors: Rich Gilchrist, Kevin Turgon, Kevin Pahn, Kevin Colomy, Jim Cucchan, Sharon McGowan, Rich McGowan, Jeremy O'Connell, Colin Dehamel, Chip DeRant, Ben Matthew, Jim Pelletier. And I thank you, Thomas Bradley, and my family. And you people as representatives of town should be proud of all of those people for letting them continue to be what they do. Thank you.
Well, thank you. And it is delightful to have you here to say that.
Thank you. And I want to let you keep this ...
Oh, that would be great. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I would just say that I know I work with, we work with the public safety departments in the day-to-day stuff, and we have budgets, and there's training, and there are false alarms, and long shifts, and so on. But this emphasizes that in the middle of all of that and in the heart of it, there are real things that need to be done. And you people need to be on point through all of that, and that is much appreciated. I'm also very pleased, as everybody should know, that we've been doing some reorganization, relocation of things, and to be able to see that that system is working and delivered the care when it was needed, where it was needed, we're very, very pleased. So, thank you all.
Thank you very much.
And again, Tom, very nice to have you here.
Thank you.
Thank you. What is he going to do, a jig now or something?
He didn't embarrass his sister, and he wanted to.
Oh. Yeah, it's Christmas. You know, you don't want to get a cold in your stocking. No, that's great. Thank you all. And I think then at this point, we can call the meeting officially to order. Calling the meeting of the selectmen to order. Open session, public meetings, is subject to being videotaped. Your image and voice may be recorded. Are people ready for these? Okay. These are meeting minutes, all open session, all three of us present, November 6th, November 27th, December 4th, and December 11th. I would entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Any comments or questions?
Nope.
Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we have an appointment to the ZBA of Ginny Zukatinsky. This is a reappointment, right?
No, she was an associate.
I saw one from associate, right. Yes, I'm used to seeing you sitting up there. Okay. Appointment to a regular member for a term to expire November 30th, 2020. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Any comments or questions?
Nope.
I think only thank you, thanks to her for serving. It's an important board, and it's a significant time commitment.
Yes.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Susan Roberts, appointment again to ZBA for a term to expire November 30th, 2020.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Any comments or questions?
Nope.
So just ditto what we just said?
Right.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. You say routine Aunt Nellie contract bond query. Is this because somebody's asked a question again?
No, it's that form, the routinely asked form by Liberty.
Ah, gotcha.
So as to not shock people as to what's going on with the bond on it, it's just the regular ask by the company.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
I dug that out of my debris this afternoon, after June had left. I can get the total paid to date from her tomorrow.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Yep. Yeah, and I was just looking, you had the question on the completion date.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would say just to be safe, mid-January, although I do think we'll probably have it, because there may be some punchless stuff. I think that we'll have the thing open at this point, just after the 1st of January.
Whatever date you want.
Yeah, so let's say mid-January, because I think there still may be some punchless stuff that's happening there. All right. So we'll put January 15th, okay? And then you'll get the ...
Yes.
All right. Okay, motion to issue the update to the surety bond indicating the current status of the Old Town Hall project.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Nope.
All right. Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I would just note that National Grid was up there today. He had said that he was hoping it was this week, and I had literally just, literally, like within 15 minutes, just sent him a note saying, are we, you know, are we still on for this? And the picture in the email came through of the trucks in front, and so I just forwarded it to him to say, never mind the email, I just sent you. Thanks. So, all right, well, 7:15, right?
Yep.
Come on down. Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
So, what are you having us sign tonight?
It's the PNS for the Web Joe purchase.
Okay.
There's two of them for the two different parcels.
Mm-hmm. And these will complete that?
They will.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because how many parcels were there with them all, though? Was it four or five?
Well, there's the one larger piece.
Yeah, and then these two.
And then, yeah.
Okay. All righty. And we haven't executed these before, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Is the date of these going to refer back to August?
As far as ...
Well, the purchase and sale is dated.
Yep.
Yeah, let's see. I just want to be sure. It's blank, but it's a blank day of August. I just wanted to be sure that, yeah, Sudbury Valley's attorneys looked at this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, and Town Council has looked at it as well.
And Town Council looked at it too.
Yep.
Okay. All right. And it gives a closing date?
Right, so one of the closing dates has passed because Town Council didn't coordinate in time, so Ashley will forward the new closing date when that's been decided on. But it should be within the next couple of weeks.
All right, because this one, the first one we're looking at, is the 22nd. The only reason I was looking at it was I wanted to be sure sometimes these things refer back to the effective date of the contract. If this thing had August, I just wanted, I wanted to be sure somebody looked at it because that's still, that's still sitting there blank, okay?
Ashley sent me some information.
Now, this one says the closing date is the 22nd.
Is January 22nd.
Is January 22nd, and that's fine.
Yep.
I'm just paging through very quickly to see if I see anything that is referenced back to the effective date. Sorry, bear with me for a minute. I just want to be sure there's nothing.
Sure, yep.
Because if I sign this and there's like a horrible mistake, you guys have an excuse.
She was his fault.
Yeah, the lawyer on board signed it too. All right. Okay, and this closing date has been adjusted to the 22nd. So you're good with the 22nd?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. And let me just do a quick ...
So how long have you been working on this?
Walter's been working on it for ...
Oh, my God, since Methuselah was a pup.
10, 15, 20 years, like ...
Really?
Yeah. This has been one of his pet projects.
All right.
It's, the night we signed the PNS, he was not present, and it was such a shame. It was like, oh, his signature should be on this.
Yeah, really. Okay, I looked at like three pages of the second one, and they all end with the same word, and they all have same words in the middle. That's how I checked to be really quickly sure of that. So, there doesn't seem to be anything that refers back to that. You're happy with the closing date of the 22nd?
Yep.
All right.
Motion to execute.
Execute.
The document?
Yep. These are purchase and sales. All right. Any further comments or questions?
Nope.
Again, I would always say it's great because it really does, I mean, we have like a state park up there at this point in terms of the amount of acreage that is contiguous.
Yeah.
It's really notable.
And especially added to the North Borough piece.
Yeah, yeah. I meant the whole tri-town thing.
Yeah, the whole thing. It's just amazing. Yep.
All right. Hearing no further comments or questions, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So you're going to have a celebration?
Once after the 22nd.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, we are planning on some sort of ribbon-cutting ceremony.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
That should ... And some of this line has really kind of dramatic features, some of the rock cabbage crops and everything.
Oh, yeah, it's beautiful up there.
It's really lovely, yeah.
Yep, it really is. Yep, and Sudbury Valley Trustees is going to rework all the trail system to incorporate the new property and put up some good trail markers and, yep, they did a really nice job over at the Sezalk property, Forty Caves.
Mm-hmm.
And so they'll do the same thing and try and coordinate also with North Borough to make it all homogeneous.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, that's great.
Yep. All right, what do we got here? Four?
Yep. Two copies of each. We just did a walk with First Parish Church yesterday at Nightfall. We always do it the last Sunday before Christmas, and we go out and we put candles down the trail all the way to that oak tree.
Oh.
And then candles are in the clearing.
Over at Berlin Meadow?
Uh, yeah.
Yeah.
And we have service and sing some carols in the woods, and then people come over to our house and have wassail and hump talk.
Oh, that's wonderful.
And it's quite pretty because we go in at about 4:30, quarter to 5:00, when it's just getting dark, and then by the time, you know, your tenderness, it's dark.
Right.
And then you see the trail sort of winding and ...
All lit. Oh, that's beautiful. Did somebody take pictures, I hope?
Yeah, we have some pictures. I should send them to you because I think, yeah.
That would be wonderful, yeah.
Yeah. So, we give you these?
Uh, yes.
You don't need copies of those, do you?
Yeah, usually I do.
Okay.
Okay, do you want to make copies and just put it?
I could do it real quick and give them back to you.
Okay. Excellent.
All right.
Awesome. Well, I'll go let you guys move on.
And we'll just start talking about the budget then.
All right. Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas, yes, indeed. Thanks for coming in.
Thanks for seeing me on short notice.
Oh, that's absolutely fine.
This is preliminary, going through the budget, trying to get everything figured out. I have pretty much everything itemized. I'm going to put together a narrative, FinCom, and I had the salaries recalculated with the flexible hours for LeAnn, up to five weeks, an additional 11 hours during the real busy time of the year. So that way there I can utilize her a little bit longer on certain weeks and still have that covered, but leaving her at the 19 hours a week for the remainder portion of the year. So I put that in here as well. On the purchase expenses and everything like that, quite a few things didn't change. I did change a few things. Office supplies went from $1,250 to $2,000 because I want to be able to buy some furniture from chairs and things like that, so that increased by $750. I also put in one for uniforms. There wasn't anything in last year, and I put in $300 for this year because I'd like to get some reflective protective equipment, jackets and hard hats and sixty glasses and things like that.
Sure.
So I put that in. And then dues was another thing that wasn't covered for the associations and the memberships and licenses and things like that. So I added that in for $300.
Okay.
And then the larger ticket item is contracted services for the new software program that I'm looking into. That's $14,100.
Okay, that's the $12,000. That was a figure we discussed last week for $12,000.
Right, right.
Okay.
So after looking through everything, $14,100 would be a recurring yearly maintenance payment to the software company, depending on which one we decide to go with. But that seems to be at the mid-range right now. That number could be spread across up to five different departments and four boards. I don't know if the boards pay anything in it or not, but I know that definitely up to five different departments can utilize the software program if we can get all that approved through town meeting and everything like that.
And there'll be an additional one-time?
Yeah, there's an additional one-time of $23,100.
Right.
So, yeah, and that's just to get it started, and then after that, it's $14,100 yearly.
IT Committee is actually looking at getting a grant to do some of the software purchases because there are multiple departments.
Yep, yep.
So I'll work on that with you, Calvin.
Yeah. And when Joe and I talked about it, we talked about the idea of breaking out what would be an annual, you know, whatever would be the annual maintenance fee out of that first year fee, and to put that into the ordinary budget because that's something that's going to recur. And so treat that separately from the one-time fee. Originally, we talked about, you know, an article for $30,000, $35,000. In talking about it, we decided it was more appropriate to break it out that way.
One thing about this too is if the software package is purchased and utilized, that 3% that is charged to the customer and to the town themselves actually goes away.
Right.
You know, and because with the one that we have right now, they pay the 3% on every permit, and on top of that, we have the maintenance fee to go with it, so.
And we discussed the fact that there is some money, I don't know how much money at this point, that is in that 3% and will be in that 3% revolving fund. If we decide to terminate that software, we'll no longer have the need for that 3%. And so when we go to fund, you know, the initial licensing purchase, that amount could be rolled into the purchase of the new software. But you and I talked about that, and we'll put that in a narrative and obviously coordinate with IT Committee in terms of ... And we also thought at this point, putting it in this budget was, you know, was okay. In later years, if we get this and if others are using it, we may want to, you know, split it out into others. But I think it's important, and I think we've seen it with the software that we have today, that as soon as we purchase that, the person who was the sort of, you know, champion or sponsor of it, and of course, we also didn't have an IT Committee at that point, but they left, and suddenly that, the software became kind of an orphan. So I think, I actually think it's a good idea to, one, to have the IT Committee, but also, you know, to have somebody savvy in one of the departments to sort of nurture it, you know, for its first year and help to promote it.
Yeah. And, you know, the thing is too, is the number of different software programs that I've been looking into, the one individual one that I like right now, the individual said that it's something we can maintain in-house, train staff in-house, and they have a tech line that if, for whatever reason, you have a problem with it, you can contact them and they'll walk you through the steps. That way there you don't need to have a consultant on-site constantly going back and re-adjusting things. It's actually become self-sufficient, and the departments can do it themselves, make adjustments and whatnot. So that would be very helpful. User-friendly.
Okay.
All right. And then the overall salaries actually dropped by almost $3,000 between the staff.
Yeah, because of Larry Senor.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that was the other thing. We thought it was a good thing to get that $12,000 maintenance into the budget this year because we had an offsetting, you know, cost in terms of bottom, that doesn't offset it completely, but it knocks the $3,000 or so off of that in terms of a differential for the total budget. So it seemed like a good ...
$12,000, you're talking about LeAnn?
No.
No.
$12,000 is the amount for annual maintenance of the software.
Okay, gotcha.
The overall personnel expense, even including LeAnn's additional hours, goes down by $3,000 and change. So what I'm saying is, looking at the entire department budget.
Right.
That $3,000 and change that we're saving this year relative to last in terms of personnel cost will help to offset the addition, that additional $12,000.
Yes.
Okay?
Good.
So that helps, again, it helps to buffer it in terms of swings from year to year.
Yep.
And then once that's on there, then that's, you know, that becomes part of the baseline for next year.
Right.
All right.
Do any of you have any questions for me, or?
We did talk about interfacing with all the departments. Is that IT Committee going to handle that as far as?
I did a survey to send to them of what all the departments have for software.
Okay.
So they can start looking at the individual pieces and how they interconnect, and they'll sort of connect the dots there, and I imagine after that, they'll talk to the individual departments and make sure that we have an overall plan rather than here, here, here.
Exactly. That's what my concern is.
That was sort of the idea together.
Yeah, yeah. And then you're putting in the one-time, have we decided, is the one-time cost in this at this point, or are we?
Not at this point, because I didn't know if we were going to do a warrant article for that.
No, that's exactly, and I thought, you know ...
That would be a warrant or the grant, right?
A warrant or the grant, or you would put it in the budget as a one-time, there are three ...
There are three ways to do it.
First of all, it has to be in the budget. It may be funded from the grant. The real question is, do we just put it in his budget and it's voted as part of his budget? Do we want to split it out as a separate special article, that, the one-time charge?
Grant could cover a special article.
A grant could cover it, but you still have to, you have to budget it and vote it, either as a budget or ...
Exactly.
That's all I'm saying is, those are the two choices.
Exactly.
That we have for voting and funding it. Yes, the grant could fund it, whatever.
Yes.
So Joe and I went through all rest of the stuff that we've just talked about. We did not make any kind of final decision as to whether we wanted to do this as a special article or a part of his budget. And when you and I talked, we talked about the fact that we might want to talk to FinCom about what their preference would be for that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It might be a good idea.
It also seems to me that we're, this figure is sort of, if you will, content neutral. I mean, the fact that we're putting this in the budget doesn't mean we're doing a particular thing. There's still room for IT to talk and decide exactly what we're spending it in.
Right.
But I think we're reasonably comfortable that's a reasonable amount to put in the budget for this year, whichever program we determine to do.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, I think it works.
Yeah. So I think if you put that, the narrative, together, I'm happy to review it.
Okay.
And I think let's put, what I would do is, at this point, maybe file the budget as you have it now.
Okay.
But in the narrative, put in the fact that we want to discuss with FinCom whether we want to put this, when do we want to put the one-time charge as part of, just roll it into the budget?
Yeah.
Or as a special article?
Okay.
But for now, do it this way because then it's going to be, it'll be really easy. If they want us to do it in the budget, you just add that amount into the budget and everything else is going to be done.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. I can do that, no problem.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Same to you.
Yeah.
Are you voting the budget?
Um, no, we haven't.
With a narrative, no, with a narrative to follow?
Yeah. No, we haven't voted it. You're, that's okay. You submit the narrative, and you don't have to come in again.
Okay.
You know?
All right. Fantastic. Thank you very much.
All right.
All right, have a good night.
Thanks. Are you going to sign the cover sheet tonight?
No.
Oh, okay.
We didn't.
He's going to do the narrative.
He's going to do the narrative. We're going to review it. Yep. Yep. Okey-dokey. All right. And we have recreation coming in 7:45, right?
Yes.
Okay. This is the renewal certification. And do we have to sign this despite the NA stuff? Is that?
Yep, because, yes.
So this is what's going to be submitted, this?
There's another flag in there, too, is there not?
I see that, but I want to be sure this is ...
That is correct.
Yes, okay. So it will be, just to cross it off, you put NA.
Just like that.
Okay, cool. And this is an indication that there were no licenses that failed to renew or that were disapproved, right?
Yes.
So, motion to approve an annual certificate indicating that no licenses failed to renew or were disapproved.
So moved.
All right. I'm sorry to be tedious. I always like to know when I'm signing here.
That's okay. No, I'm just thinking, we're signing, we're signing something.
That's okay. No, I'm just thinking, we're signing, we're signing something that.
Yeah.
Because nobody wanted licenses renewed. Just seems kind of silly, but that's.
There you go. All right. Any other comments or questions?
No, that's it. I probably shouldn't have made that comment.
No, that's all right. It is, uh, okay, hearing none. We'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. There you go. All right, and then the next one, um, is Kadova?
Change of manager.
Change of manager. And, um, I presume we've done the background research and all of that?
We don't. We submit it to the ABCC.
And they do it.
They do the background.
That's right. Okay. A motion to submit, uh, to, yes, to submit the, uh, local license authority review record.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
No.
All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we are signing, asked to sign a corrected pers- uh, personnel classification sheet. And what are, what are the corrections?
I circled. There are some things that, just the way that the Excel cells wrapped text around, some of the job, job titles got knocked off.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. Oh, yeah, so this is.
No data, otherwise.
All right.
Change.
Okay. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Nope.
Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. This is a, uh, vote to amend the liaison assignments. This is just adding board of assessors to me?
Yes.
Motion to approve?
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Next we have the selectmen's. I presume the only changes were the personnel COLA stuff, correct?
What, are you looking at the selectman's budget?
Yeah.
Oh, did I not give you the, um, license rea- oh, you know, the license renewals might be at the end of the package there? Uh, on, on the agenda, the order, the next thing is license renewals. They made, they, uh, I think they're the last folder in that package.
Oh, okay. Ah, license renewals, okay. All right, there, 7:45. Well, we might as well, um, we'll hold those rather than, uh. Good evening. How are you?
We're good.
Good.
How are you doing? Not too bad. Do you have everybody you're expecting?
Uh, not quite yet.
Okay, no, that's fine. We're, uh.
Hoping for at least one more set of tiptoe footprints coming in.
Okay. Well, we might as well run through a couple of things. The selectmen's budget? Is that just the, I, I.
I think that you would want to maybe, um, I only sent it this afternoon.
Uh, we can go over it.
Oh, go ahead.
Yeah. Uh, but I just want to see the, uh, the, the increases on the personnel are just the steps.
These elected salaries is just the 2.7 COLA.
Mm-hmm.
Yes, and it's a step from me.
Yep, and a COLA for you.
The step, yes, includes the COLA in the new graph, yes.
Yep, okay.
And the same, if you want, the same additional 20 hours buffer in case of emergency. Remember, I'm kind of low this year anyhow on keeping up with that, but, you know.
Yeah, we're not changing, yeah, that's, all I'm saying is, uh, what I was asking was, all we're doing here.
That's correct.
Is adjusting.
Just as we talked.
Yeah. Okay. Everybody understand that?
Yep.
And then they're really.
Well, there was one other change that benefits myself, so I feel like I should talk to you about it, was I asked for an increase in the cell phone reimbursement.
Mm-hmm.
Per month. I am using it a lot more.
And that's the additional $240?
I think so, yeah.
Yep. Okay. I accept a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Yeah, I actually wanted to know if we had a cell phone reimbursement policy? If this was something that was in our personnel.
It's not uniform, no.
No, it is something that we've agreed with her when she uses it because we don't provide it, but yes.
Okay. Cause I guess my thought is that most of the work should be done in the office. We do provide a phone system here. If working from home, then that's sort of a privilege that the town should probably not be paying for. I also think it encourages violation of the Fair Labor Standards Act by being too easy to just reach for outside of the office for a non-exempt employee.
Okay.
Tell us, tell us how you use it, Mary?
I can post a, a meeting for the Devon's dispatch with no time to spare as we're driving to it. Or, you know, you know, a lot of these things come out late. I'm texting the department heads. It's a better way for me to reach them than their email, which they're on the road and they're not looking at their email, or voicemail messages, which they don't get. The Gmail now allows for email to come to my phone, which I do monitor nights and weekends and push the most important stuff through. Doesn't take a lot of time. It does absolutely take time, but it doesn't take a lot of time. And if there were, um, election results posted at night, I hop on the phone and I can put up election results on Facebook and. So there have been, there are, there are times regularly, especially texting the selectmen, department heads, that I reach people fastest through text message.
And is that on a reimbursement basis if you incur the expense?
Reimbursement. What do you mean?
It's not, it's, it's paying part of the cell phone.
Per incident?
Yeah, I'm just, I'm asking you what, what the basis of the reimbursement is.
Per month.
Mm-hmm. And where reimbursing you?
This year it had been, it is $10 a month.
Mm-hmm.
There's also, which is not my doing, but there's no Wi-Fi signal in here. There isn't, uh, something that reaches into this room, so I'm pinging off a tower a lot more than usual. The other people on this floor have noted the same thing. That could be fixed.
I did actually, I, I did talk to Tom Galvin about that and that is on the list of things to address. They just started dressing it downstairs first.
Mm-hmm.
But that is something that.
So this is a reimbursement then of $30 a month?
Right. As to uniformity between departments, there are several departments that have their entire bills paid for us.
This would be something, like I said, I have a concern because it's a slippery slope and it sounds like we don't have a po- a policy. And if you're working in the office, generally a cell phone is not something that would be part of the.
I think in some cases it is.
I'm, I'm actually, I'm not particularly bothered by, I mean, I think this can be a policy that, uh, I'm happy to, to look at it on a going-forward basis, but I think it's a policy that could be done on a department-by-department basis. I don't think necessarily it is a policy that's necessary to be done on a town-wide basis. And I don't, I don't really have a problem with the reimbursement of, of $30 a month for it.
Because the bill's usually much more than that.
Yes.
It is, but like I said, this, this has the potential to keep going and become a significant expense.
And if it, if it does, I would deal with it at that point. My, that would be my feeling.
I would agree.
Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote, uh, on the budget as, and the budget currently would include a $30 a month reimbursement, which is an increase of $240 over the course of the year. So that this, uh, motion to approve the budget, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Are you guys ready now?
We've got four out of five. We're not sure.
Okay, well, it's, it's both the appointed hour and it's your party, so if you're ready to start, let's start.
How are you?
Good.
Good. This is neighbor mine, kinda, sorta.
Yep, around the corner.
Yeah. And this one's a neighbor mine too, kinda, sorta.
Yeah, across the road, yeah.
And it's, I think Recreation should be a, um, some kind of a fundraiser where we do the best lights.
Ah!
I, I do, I mean.
We had that years ago.
Did you?
We used to have the, the Christmas house decorating competition. Dennis Farabee had gone crazy.
Yeah, I remember that, yes.
I do remember that.
Who else used to go crazy too, but they definitely, I think, what Dennis used to put deep.
Yeah.
All right.
I mean, it could be most lights, it could be most quaint, most, you know, whatever. But you'd have to, you'd have to, you know, maybe pay $25 in order to join the group and get looked at, and you never know.
That's cute. I love it.
All right, so, why don't you, uh, go ahead.
Tell us why, uh, you called us all here tonight.
Take it from here, so. Well, basically, for the annual budget or whatnot, as we've been doing for umpteen years since the town officers' meeting, I think about 10 years ago, and you asked for, for us to keep it level-funded. We had done that for many years, and then last year, we asked for an increase to cover some of the, some of the services or whatnot. In discussion recently, um, we've kind of decided to ask for taking a, a different approach here as compared to how we've been financing ourself in the past. And, uh, so these guys have all been pulling together numbers and whatnot and, and would like to consider taking our financing a different direction.
Mm-hmm. So, um, the upshot is that, um, you know, over the past few years, the recreation activity was funded from two sources, part being the town budget, part being revenues brought in through renting of the fields. With that money, um, things like trash, porta-potties, field maintenance, you know, a lot of, um, you know, admini- some administrative and some recreation-specific items were able to be covered by that money. So, um, recently, the revenue part of that equation has dropped dramatically with the loss of a key customer. Uh, obviously, we'd like to get the customer back, um, so we are doing what we can to improve the fields and make South Commons kind of a more attractive place. But in the meantime, we have a gap, so the revolving.
How much money did you lose from that?
That particular customer, I think, was around 6,000. Must be more though, because the, the, if you add the numbers together, it's down about 11,000 in, uh, income this year as compared to last year.
The, the one soccer club was, was usually $3,500 in the spring, $3,500 in the fall. So we've lost them completely as of right now. The soccer camp was $1,000 a week and they've gone from three weeks down to two weeks as well, so that was another thousand. And then maybe there was some other outside rentals that weren't like soccer.
Okay.
Related, so. So basically, when I'm reading this, is you've lost $11,000 in external, um, funding. It's not there right now, correct? Yeah. And you're asking for $11,393.50 from the budget to replace that, right?
Correct.
What's the 50 cents? That, I mean, that seems to make sense to me that, um.
What are you planning to do to get the fields back up to par?
Well, it, it also, um, even if this revenue does come back in, having a full committee here now and identifying projects that we would like to do are gonna take money. I mean, the past five years, when we haven't exactly had a, a full committee and we were renting out the fields pretty heavily, we were, yes, slowly growing the bank account, but, um, not by leaps and bounds. And now that we have a, a full committee, even if we were to be, um, renting out the fields, we're still gonna be cash flow negative and spending, cause some of these projects are, are gonna take some, you know, definite funding and whatnot. So, um, I think the, the incentive there is to say, hey, all of these ongoing maintenance things that we've had in place and, you know, we've got historical invoices to show what we've been spending for over the years, and those maintenance costs aren't gonna be going away. So instead of continuing to carry those out of money that we bring in, let's earmark or let's spend the money we bring in on projects and the annual maintenance costs, let's fund that through an annual budget as compared to the way we've been doing it. Okay, and this roughly, um, this $10,800 amount that you have in the budget for field maintenance, is that realistic? Can you do what you want to do in the course of this year with that?
Well, that number was derived from what we had spent this, you know, in this past year on aeration, fertilization, um, and it's not an aggressive maintenance plan. It's kind of, you know.
Oh, no, no, no. The point of my question was.
Do we need more to get those customers?
On the one hand, I'm hearing you say that you can't maintain the fields to a standard where they are attractive to, you know, club play and so on. And then on the other hand, I'm saying, you know, I'm hearing you say that you want the same, um, ba- basically the same amount of money for field maintenance that you've been spending. Am I misunderstanding?
No, I, I think that's correct. I think what this allows us to do is at least, um, maintain our activity. And then we can take revenue from rentals or from activities and then roll that into what I would call the bonus category, which is, um, like step-level improvements in that area.
Mm-hmm. There is a, there's a, like a baseline preventive maintenance program that we do where we fertilize, um, four times a year and whatnot. And that's, that's the baseline contract that they, um, give us a written quotation every springtime. We have in the past gone out to make sure it's competitive and whatnot. We used to be using Diamond Athletics on the backfield section there. So we get that contract every springtime. That's the baseline stuff that we do. This past springtime, we did do some extra fertilizing, I'm sorry, and seeding in the backfield in order to try and regenerate that area, as well as we put some, um, additional cost or money into the baseball fields to get those back up into decent shape, of which baseball did contribute back heavily towards the cost of doing that as well, so we're not saying we're. Okay, so you feel that, you know, you, you, you can do stuff. I was just looking at the numbers and saying, you're, you're, you're basically asking for a replacement amount, but you were saying that, uh, it wasn't enough to keep it up, so, but now I understand there are other sources and so on.
Yeah, we, we would, yeah, and we would leverage the existing revolving account balance.
Yeah.
You know, plus future revenues into future upgrades.
Okay.
How long do you think it will take to get things back up to where people want to rent and do those things?
I'd like to get a plan together that, you know, by the spring of, let's see, we're in '17, '18, so spring of '19, I think would be a good time to go market, um, winter into spring marketing and getting more customers for that summer. I think it'll take this whole year. Um, this is the year that we're trying to do the walkway, uh, in that area as well with the park course. I think that will be a nice touch, a nice add for that area as well.
Mm-hmm.
We, uh, we just had, um, an inspection done on the playground. And, you know, after, I think, like what Rob said, for a long time, there wasn't a full committee that was working and being proactive on projects, and a lot of things fell by the wayside. And now we've determined that after the inspection, that we're gonna have to put some money into the playground. There's a lot of things that need to be repaired there before things get worse. So, um, you know, that's something. So, um, you know, that's something also down the pike that we're not even sure how much we're gonna need to put into that, um, but we're basically trying to add enhancements, you know, wherever we can, you know, to keep it, um...
Did you pass inspection?
We did pass, yeah, we passed the inspection, but we were given, you know, of course, guidelines and things about what we needed to fix and what was observations.
Playground maintenance repair, yep.
Yeah, um, you know, and then with the fields, too, we do our best to try to rotate the soccer groups into, like, different areas so that we can try to work on different sections of the field, you know, but, you know, we are actually very fortunate to have, you know, we have a tremendous soccer program here, so I don't know if you've ever drive by on Saturdays and, you know, and see, you know, how much use they're getting, um, so, which is a great thing, but when you're trying to, you know, fix the fields, like I said, we're constantly rotating people around.
Okay, and just so, I, I'm sure I understand, um, when it says playground, is that purchase of services or purchase of supplies? Because we have to, uh, we have to divvy this up into its proper... We're, uh, coming back on, uh, on the tape now. Uh, we ran out of taping capacity, but what you missed was a vote to approve the recreation committee's budget as submitted to us, including some of the small adjustments that we discussed. Alright. So... Tonight, we have for Nichols and Dimes Inc., doing business as the Tilt Studio at the Solomon Pond Mall, three licenses, and, uh, I'll accept a motion on all three of them unless somebody wants to discuss one separately. Uh, one is a common victual's license, one is public amusement, and one is, um, for automatic amusement, uh, devices.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions? Alright, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and nothing besides the three green sheets on these, right?
Right.
There you go. The next is a common victual's license for BJ's Wholesale Club. Motion to approve.
So moot.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Alright, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next is a common victual's license for Nuria Energy Retail Inc., doing business as River Bridge Shell. Motion to approve.
So moot.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Alright, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Great. Popped the high tide line there. The next is a, um, motor vehicle junk license, class three, for Berlin Auto Parts, subject to the same stipulations as we have had in place. Um, the, uh, chiefs have indicated at this point that there is no, there are no problems, no, no objections to this. Uh, we did our inspection part of the way through the year in the summer.
Okay.
So motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
No.
Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Oh, sorry. Yes, yes. No, sorry, I was already reading this one. Um... This is a license for the sale, class one, for the sale of second-hand motor vehicles?
No, it's, that's included in, is that Cabela's, the TMBC?
Yes.
Yeah, that's class one, includes the right to sell used motor vehicles.
Okay.
So it's new motor vehicles with the name of those Ford franchise brands.
Mm-hmm, okay. Yeah, I just wanted to be, um, okay?
Doing business as Cabela's.
Yep, doing business as Cabela's. They'll continue to do business as Cabela's?
That's their name, yeah.
Okay. Alright then, uh, we did, uh, confirm that, uh, the legal, the legal entity, but they're also gonna continue to do business as Cabela's, is that correct?
Yes.
Alright then. I would accept a motion to approve, uh, the renewal of the license, um, class one license for, uh, TMBC LLC, doing business as Cabela's. I would note that, uh, the legal entity will be different as of the first of the year due to that, but the, uh, the DBA will remain the same.
Okay, motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So there's two others that are under Cabela's.
Yep. And also Cabela's common victual's license, and, um...
One auto amusement device.
Oh, yes, one automatic amusement device, a penny press.
Motion to approve.
Alright.
Second.
Okay, this motion would cover both licenses. Any comments or questions?
Nope.
Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next for the Berlin General Store and Eatery, we have two. That is a common victual's license, and a license, uh, for the sale of frozen desserts, ice cream mix, confectionery soda water, or fruit on the Lord's Day.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I love that one.
I know.
It's like, you know? It's, it's a state law. It's a state law that requires you to be licensed to serve ice cream on Sunday.
I don't know about the required part, but we still do it.
Well, it's still part of the general laws. Yeah. Okay, any other comments or questions?
Nope.
Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and then, uh, a class one license to Sylvia Wheeler, Snapper Corporation, Wheeler Garage. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Nope.
Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alrighty, so that's, that's that. Okay, we did the selectmen's budget. We have, um, the accountant's budget. I went over this, uh, over this with June. Um, is the COLA step raise. In addition to that, there are a couple of, like, minor increases, $20 to postage, $20 to the cost of software. In addition to that, she's requested $500 for the purchase of a file cabinet. That's the only, uh, significant, uh, the recertification for her, the education went up $100 from $1,250 to $1,350. Uh, she's added $100 to a $900 budget item, uh, for workshops, et cetera, and $30 to the travel budget, which really reflects, you know, increases in per-mileage costs and so on. So, it's, that's what it is. Uh, take a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Nope.
Hearing none, we'll take a vote.
I just have...
Oh, sorry.
The filing cabinets, I would just ask that before she purchases, that we check down there, 'cause, um, Tim seemed to feel that there were one or two that were almost emptied on, and...
And that, there is one or two that should be emptied.
Yeah, so maybe...
From the school committee, 'cause I don't think they use them.
Take one from there first before we...
If there's, if there's one that she'd like, yeah.
Yeah, I'll talk to her. I don't know, you know, what her space constraints are, if she has a particular...
Yeah, and I know she's, she's gone through her stuff, so I don't feel bad about her having one. I just know we have all this furniture around and...
That's fine, I'll talk to her about it.
She might be able to have it quicker.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The collector of taxes.
Do we need to make a decision on what we're gonna do with her?
Yeah, I think we'll hold that one up.
Yeah, I was just gonna, I was just gonna say, maybe it'd be better to put that as a subject on the agenda for the future or something.
Yeah, 'cause this one is...
I don't know what, I don't remember what he submitted. I did see it today, but I didn't, I don't remember. Didn't, didn't he submit, too?
Yes, there's another one, treasurer collector. That's just tax collector.
Yeah, I think we, uh, we should probably have a meeting, you know, the first week after January and, uh...
With all of them, or just...
And actually have this...
Or just have a discussion, or...
Um, I'd, I'd like to reconvene the meeting that we had before, and I would like to have everybody there.
Okay.
And I will make the point that I want to talk about everything that should be on the table at that meeting. No more frequent sidebar, you know, I mean, people, when we get together, they should, uh, we should talk about it, and we should put this, these two on the agenda for that, and we'll discuss those then.
Too early to ponder on dates, or?
Hmm?
Too early to consider dates? You don't wanna do it during a selectman's meeting, you might have a daytime?
Yeah, just, that'd be a daytime meeting, and I do have to take a, I do have to take a look at that. But we will, we will schedule that in the, for, within the first two weeks of January. I'm sure we can get a date there, okay? Alright, the agricultural committee, uh, actually has gone down by 125. A motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
Nope.
Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Highway. I just wanna see. So this is highway personnel, and, um... I just want to, uh, I presume, 'cause there's no explanation, that this just went out, this is just the, uh, these figures reflect just the COLA and...
The COLA, um, for FY19, it may be a step in a COLA.
Step in a COLA. Have you talked to Keith about this?
No, I haven't.
Okay.
You want me to talk to him?
Well, I mean, I always like, sort of like to know when I'm signing, and, um, either there's...
I am pretty sure...
Either needs to be a written explanation, or he needs to have talked to one of us.
Okay. I can talk to him.
Yeah, I mean, we can... Alright, so we can do that one, probably on the second of, of January. I presume two... Yeah, I can do this one. One of these makes sort of sense, that it's a step in a COLA on the part-time wages, because it was tenant change, and the increase is 2.9.
Mm-hmm.
But I have to say, I don't... Understand, let's see. There we go. Something in this, um, this... Okay. Okay. Alright, so the overtime amounts are calculated on this sheet, and I see that. The part-time is just the stepping, that, that made, that one made sense, okay. The, uh, there is a, there is a sheet that he's done that comes out to that 36065 figure. Uh, it's an increase in full-time overtime of $1,318, a relatively minor increase. I think this one is okay. This is the snow.
Snow is okay.
How do people feel about that? Yeah, this one makes sense. The other one, I, I just didn't have enough info. Okay?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any other comments or questions?
Nope.
Hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, fuel oil, level-funded. Motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any comments or questions? Alright, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um... Now we're back to the electricity, which is $18,000 more. Have we gotten any... Have we gotten any information as to whether there'll be an offset because of things that we're not lighting? I mean, you know, how was this arrived at?
This was arrived at by the formula.
Okay.
That...
The formula for the new building, and I saw that.
Yes, and I believe June used that information and put this together.
Okay. But this doesn't include any calculation of offset or savings from retiring the old highway barn and not lighting it?
No, it does not. I guess we would have to make that decision and...
Okay. I guess if this is calculated on the electrical cost of that new building, I think I'm willing to sign it, but I think we should discuss with FinCom, and before it goes to FinCom, we should have some idea of whether we have offsetting...
Yes.
Savings.
Exactly.
So maybe to move this along, we could sign it and, how does that sound?
That's fine.
That sounds good.
Okay.
I would assume it would go down with the other building coming up line. There'll probably still be a cost, but it should go down.
Yeah, I mean, that 18,000 should be...
I mean, there's no notation from June saying that she's...
Concerned about or whatever.
Taken anything else out of the picture.
Yep.
So...
Yep, okay, well, let's, let's sign it. Can you follow that up with Keith maybe, or is it...
I can follow it up with FinCom, or no?
No, I would like us to follow it up and have a little more information before we go to FinCom with it. In other words...
Okay.
Let's sign it and snap it.
Almost have, I can follow it up with either June or Keith.
Okay, that's good. And just find out if they, you know, what's currently the electrical, you know, service on the old town barn? I mean, that's a good place to start.
Right. Okay.
Okay, all right, so with that proviso, motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All right, hearing none, we'll take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I think that's the bottom of that pile. All right, any, any updates? Selectmen's updates?
I would like to add the regionalization to one of the January agendas to fill you in on the last meeting or so.
Okay, that'd be great.
Okay. There may be some stuff that I can actually send or give to Mary, and she can copy it and scan it to you too, so you have a chance to look at it. We did have a budget presentation of some kind, so might be interesting for you. And they actually would like to come in at some point, the regionalization, members of the school committee.
Okay.
I think January, February, or something.
I hadn't think we'd seen the last of them. I look forward to it.
Okay.
All right, anything more?
I had a request for some hooks downstairs in the bathroom to put coats and stuff on.
You had what?
I had a request for some hooks down in the bathroom downstairs to put coats and such on, on Election Day. So I'm passing it on. There's no place to put your stuff.
Okay.
Okay.
So I don't know where you want to go with that.
All right.
I was wondering...
Do you want me to tell Keith?
Yeah, that would be great. I mean, it's...
Who did you pass it on to?
I haven't, I'm just passing it on.
Oh, all right, he's passing it on to me?
Well, yeah, you can pass, I mean, you can talk to Keith about it. You can talk to Keith about it.
I'll get, have him get in touch with you, because you know we're...
All right.
All right.
Okay. All right.
I was wondering if names need to be on warrant articles when there is a reimbursement, such as the conservation article that we had on the special town meeting?
If we're reimbursing a person?
Any specific person, so it has to be on there, and that person has to be called out?
Yes.
Okay.
Because that's the expenditure, yep.
Okay.
Yeah, we did that, we did that a previous year, I think, when the building inspector had a reimbursement.
And just, you know, calling a volunteer out in that manner?
Right.
Yeah.
I'd rather not if it's not necessary.
Yeah, no. Well, here's the thing, that if, that's an unusual situation. Normally, you have a budget, and normally what that person would have done is they would in a conservation commission meeting have submitted a request for reimbursement. It would have been voted by ConCom and signed by us as a warrant, and that's it. I mean, you know, it's just, but obviously the warrant has to say, we're reimbursing X, Y, Z. The problem with that one was, it was reimbursement of a prior year, and so it had to be up on the town meeting floor, yeah. And you do have to, whenever you do that with a prior, you have to actually indicate the expenditure. Yep.
I just wanted to make sure, like I said, because I thought that was, volunteer.
All right, let's see.
Oh, I also, I had one more thing. Chief Galvin, actually, I touched base with him about the Wi-Fi and the fax question, and he had said that they are working on the Wi-Fi issue. Like I said, they're going to do the downstairs first, but they are looking at and trying to figure out what's going on up here also. And the fax issue, there is a way to do that, it's...
Sorry, what was the, I, what exactly was it? I read the email, but I...
It kind of fades out every 15 minutes or so, I think is the...
Does not work.
Yeah.
The fax?
The Wi-Fi signal.
No, the Wi-Fi. The fax, the issue with the fax is that it still goes to a machine and spits out paper and it should be digital.
Oh, yes, okay, okay.
But they, when that's consolidated, it will go to one email address, and a decision will need to be made where it's going to go, and who's going to sort of divvy them out.
Okay, yes.
Did you get your outlook issue taken care of too?
No.
Not yet?
No, I'm not the only one. Tom says there's other departments that have the same problem, but I'm a really hard user of emails, so...
Right.
Seems really more troublesome to me than others.
Right.
Yeah.
I did get my outlook taken care of.
That's good.
At home. I did get my email set up on my computer and iPad and phone and...
Should I switch over to where I send emails though?
It doesn't matter, because I get them all.
Oh.
So if you'd like two, you can.
Okay.
And what did you, because you had the same problem as I did, you couldn't get another...
I had a...
You couldn't get another email address?
I had a Gmail address. I don't know if that made a difference or not, but I finally spent an afternoon talking with Nancy from CM Geeks, and she got me all set up on my, my new computer and my, my old computer and so on and so forth. So now I think I can get everything.
I was just fishing for a tip, because you had the same problem that I...
She actually, she has you download a, what is it called? It's a download where she can actually handle your mouse.
Oh, yeah.
And she does stuff. And there's the mouse going off the screen.
Oh, yeah, I mean, yes, we have that at the office.
And she...
She doesn't speak with a Russian accent or anything?
No, no, no. So I did get that straightened out. I think as far as, I mentioned that maybe with the Google Drive, I would need a reminder to go look at it, so I don't know what's easier, if, if just to remind me to go look at the Google Drive, or just send me the document?
Oh, for documents you put on the Google Drive?
Yes.
Not emails?
No.
How about, how about read only access to the, the selectmen's drive versus creating this new bucket? It's no different than miscellaneous correspondence that some people may or may not go through. I just try to figure out not to duplicate work.
Right. I was trying to figure what's easier.
Personally, I'd just, I'd love to have the documents up on, for each week's meeting up on Google Drive.
Oh, that's even different, okay.
That would be my, I don't think we need miscellaneous correspondence. I think it'd be nice to have the documents for the meeting all in one place, rather than fishing and trying to find them through emails, but...
And then you could, how would that work? Would you, like, once the meeting's over, delete them and put up the next set for the next meeting?
You could keep the dated folders.
Or dated, yes.
Yeah, just folder.
That would be handy, however, then I would have to bring a computer, right?
Some towns do have laptops for their selectmen.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, that's even just, it would even just be easier when you're trying to research for the next meeting, if you didn't want to do it here, I think it would be easier to have them, sort of, because even tonight, like, you were looking for something and couldn't find it in the email, because it's...
Yeah. I don't know.
We can spend some time.
Yeah, why don't we, why don't we talk about it as an agenda item or something? I, I don't know, or...
I'd like to talk to other towns to see how they put together their meeting packets and maybe come back with an idea on that.
Yeah.
That would be great.
Versus recreating the wheel, someone else is already doing it.
Yeah, I think that's good.
I don't know what, I don't know what the schools do anymore. I mean, they, they used to send out an email that had all of the attachments.
I'm pretty sure based on what Nadine showed us, that they were using Drive.
They might be using Drive. I know they're using Drive for the regionalization, but I didn't, I don't have access to anything else except for the regionalization drive, so.
Okay.
Anyway.
And you'd like it to be ultimately Google Drive would be, work with our platform?
Yeah, it also like, you can take emails and just push the Drive button, and they go right into the, into Drive, rather than downloading and putting them somewhere else.
I'm not really good with Drive either.
Well, we'll learn.
I will learn.
Yeah.
But...
I said, we'll have to learn.
Yes, we will have to learn.
Yes, I just wanted to...
The nice thing is, like I said, there's a little button in email...
Well, a couple of times you said, did you try this button, and then there it is?
Yeah.
So...
File attachments just go directly in from Gmail, which is really slick.
Yeah, that's cool. All right.
In a second.
That's okay, I'll get it later. Okay, my, no more updates for you?
No, that's it.
I went with both June and Joe to finalize their budgets. And I also thanked both June and Leanne for their support in the project back in October to get a handle on what we had spent and what we had available for the Old Town Hall. I said we couldn't have gone to the special town meeting, or even known how much to ask for, without the support that the two of them had given, so.
Yes.
I thank them for that. And for those who haven't, might be watching this on cable or Facebook, the last major hurdle with the Old Town Hall is, will rapidly be behind us, which was getting National Grid in to do the three-phase power. They are here and they are doing it, so once that is done, there's really, you know, relatively little finished electrical work, and a day of the elevator installer, you know, calibrating and so on, once it's, once all the power is up, and we'll be back in the hall. Cleanup has already been initiated and...
Are they having any more meetings? Any more?
They may have one after the first of the year, and there, you know, there may be a punch list stuff, which is one of the reasons I said, yeah, we ought to say this will go on through mid-January, and it may go on a little more, but it'll be, again, relatively minor.
Right.
Punch list stuff, but it's looking really very good. I think when people get in there, they'll be, they'll be really pleased.
Mm-hmm.
Anything else?
No.
Done. I have just one more thing. Wish everybody a Merry Christmas, Happy Holiday.
Yeah, we'll see you after the New Year.
We'll see you after the New Year.
Not before, huh?
Yeah.
Would you like a motion to adjourn?
That would be a lovely Christmas present.
So moved.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye. You're easy to play.